At the request of Delegate Miares, this may not help, but with the support of the Speaker, this will probably help. I request unanimous consent to file a bill after well past the filing deadline. The purpose of the bill is to extend the sunset provision for a commission on economic opportunity for Virginians in aspiring and diverse communities, which is chaired by Delegate Miares.
Shall the House grant unanimous consent for the introduction of a bill at the request of the Speaker and Delegate Miares well past the deadline? All those in favor of granting unanimous consent shall say aye. Those opposed, no, unanimous consent is granted. Delegate from Augusta, Delegate Landis.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for the purpose of a mo—
Delegate from Stafford, Delegate Thomas.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion.
Delegate—
I move House Bill 2328 to the regular calendar for my freshman friend. Page nine.
Can you say that one more time, page nine?
Page nine, House Bill 2328. It's requested.
Just a request. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
The third portion of the morning hour is reserved for requests for members—by members for legislation to go by for the day, and if any, a subsequent motion by the majority leader. Mr. Speaker, there are several, all towards the end of today's printed calendar, under the category of House Bill Second Reading Regular. House Bill Second Reading Regular. On page thirty-six, Delegate Rasool, his House Bill 1635 has been requested to go by for the day by Delegate Weber. The same page, same category, Delegate Keem, House Bill 1884, that's been requested to go by—for the day by Delegate Price. Page thirty-seven, same category, Delegate McGuire's, House Bill 2034, that's been requested to go by for the day by Delegate Lopez. And finally, on page thirty-nine, same category, Delegate Gilbert's, House Bill 2585, he has requested to have that bill go by for the day.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the legislation as announced by the clerk go by for the day.
The delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert, moves that legislation as announced by the clerk go by for the day. Those in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no, the motion is agreed to.
The fourth and final portion of the morning hour at this time, member requests now in order for points of personal privilege.
The delegate from Colonial Heights, Delegate Cox.
Mr. Speaker, point of personal privilege.
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I've been here almost thirty years. Delivering this speech from the same place I started, desk number seventy-nine, ironically, my mic didn't work. I held that seat for two years, and this seat has been empty since 2001, so this seat has certainly rarely been used. Let me couple that with Mr. Speaker with saying, I have never heard a speaker give a floor speech. If you look sort of at the back of the gallery, you will see Speaker Phil Pot, Speaker Moss, Speaker Wilkins, Speaker Putney, and Speaker Howell. And of course, I had the honor to serve under all of them. So what would compel me to give a speech today? A lot of you know I'm not the most spontaneous person in the world, and I'm certainly not the most impulsive, and I'm a big believer in tradition. And boy, do I fully understand that this office comes with tremendous power. I fully understand that you must use that power wisely. And believe you me, I pray often for wisdom. I say all of this knowing I know what I'm doing today. I know it's a very big deal. This speech is about the number sixty-one million, twelve thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven. Let me repeat that. Sixty-one million, twelve thou—
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Fuller, one.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, members of this body, it's often been said on the floor that despite sincere and strong differences and disagreements we have on so many issues, we are members of this body. As members of this body, we're part of a family, that we take care of each other and that we look out for one another. Mr. Speaker, I rise today because of an incident that occurred on Monday in one of our committees that spilled into cyberspace yesterday, the consequences of which we are still feeling today. A video of one of our members was posted on social media by what I had hoped was an overzealous staffer from the other side of the aisle. What the video showed was one of our members answering questions about a specific bill, deliberately misleading, and clearly was part of an orchestrated ambush. Further, Mr. Speaker, the resulting video, which was selectively edited, and the accompanying tweet and Facebook post were completely and deliberately, I believe, mischaracterized, mischaracterizing the legislation, the legislation that was being discussed and debated, as well as mischaracterization of what the current law is in the Commonwealth of Virginia today. The posts clearly and the tweets were made to inflame passions throughout the social media echo chamber, and they succeeded. What was the result? Ongoing harassment, intimidation against the patron, several members of this body, their families, and their children. And this morning, Mr. Speaker, the Republican Party of Virginia is now fundraising off of the video in question and continuing to spread it throughout the Internet. Mr. Speaker, it's not lost on many of us that these insidious tactics were used against not just a member of this body, not just a woman member of the House of Delegates, but by a woman delegate who was literally nursing her infant on the floor of the House last session and walking around the Capitol with her newborn on her hip. Mr. Speaker and members of this body, I understand that in a few short weeks, campaign season will be amongst us, and the gloves will be off. But here, while we're legislating, while we're debating issues, while we're doing the work of the people, what transpired yesterday was wrong, and it's really beneath this body and unacceptable. It's not the Virginia way that we all talk about time and time again on the floor. It's not taking care of each other, looking out for each other. It's profoundly disappointing. I hope, Mr. Speaker and members of this body, in the remaining time that we have and we're together, I hope that we can show that we are all better than this. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for a point of personal privilege, sir.
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I did not wake up this morning to stand, and I think in the ten years here, I think I've given three points of personal privilege. You gave us a very, very interesting story, a unique story. So, Mr. Speaker, I need to share with you two stories, sir. As you all know, I'm a trauma surgeon, and nineteen eighty, almost forty years ago, I started my education and training as a surgeon. Mr. Speaker and I affirm to the members of this body, I have literally seen everything that can be done by a human to another human. I've seen men and women shot, stabbed, brutally murdered, raped, mutilated, acid thrown into their face. I've seen people strangled to death, and I've taken care of a lot of those folks, Mr. Speaker. I have never, in sixty-two years, on this earth, the bill that was before us. Mr. Speaker, let me tell you the story of Billy. In nineteen eighty-eight, as a chief resident in pediatric surgery at the University of Florida, Billy was born at twenty-four weeks. Mr. Speaker, he had a hole in his heart, he had a connection between his windpipe and his esophagus, so whenever he swallowed, he was drowning himself. And he had thirty-seven segments—
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Watts.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I was not prepared to make this speech. I only hope that what I say will be accurate and help—the cause of real understanding of what is at stake. A number of years ago, as a non-attorney, but there were no women on the Courts Committee, I was appointed to the Courts Committee. And suddenly, there I was with a—many challenges, but one of those challenges was I was pro-choice. I didn't really know what that meant, and now I had the obligation in dealing with the laws of our nation, as interpreted under the Constitution by the U.S. Supreme Court, and the laws of this Commonwealth, to try to understand what choice really was. I give you three markers on that journey. Let me start with the marker that was difficult in one way, and that was in reading the basic U.S. Supreme Court decisions that dealt with abortion. The most painful one that I read had to do with partial birth abortion. It was pages and pages. I was impressed that the court very deeply looked into each individual possibility of what might be faced when you're dealing with the health of the mother. Underscoring that virtually all abortions that may occur in the second and certainly in the third trimester are abortions that are necessitated in the case of women who desperately want to carry out the pregnancy. When they made the decision, and here I stand, unprepared, I can't cite the name of the decision, but that when they made the decision that they would not outlaw third trimester abortions, that individual cases had to be protected under our Constitution that protects all individuals. Now let me translate that into my own family and watching the incredible months, years of hope that this time, my daughter-in-law's pregnancy would be a healthy pregnancy and she could go forward. But again and again, usually in the first trimester, it was not to be. There was a particularly hopeful time, though, when as you were approaching the thirteenth and fourteenth week, it looked like it wouldn't self-abort. But what became clearer and clearer, as you had more detail of the developing fetus, that the fetus did not appear to be healthy. The body hadn't rejected it yet, but the fetus didn't appear to be healthy. So you wait another week, and you wait another week, because you hope that it will be healthy, and you will finally be able to carry out that pregnancy. So by the time that you reach the point when it is absolutely clear that what you are dealing with is the brain being totally sucked into the spinal column, the grief, the mourning begins as you make that decision. That is one example of what the Supreme Court ruled in not making the determination that there is a specific point that we will override the health of the mother, the medical decision of what must go forward. Let me close by giving another example of choice. My own daughter, my own daughter who absolutely is pro-choice. In both of her pregnancies, she actually refused to have, I believe I'm going to say it right, amniocentithis, because she did not want to inadvertently make a decision based on a false positive. That was her choice. Do not assume that women and their families and their medical doctors are making anything but the deepest possible personal moral choice when they exercise choice. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The clerk will call the calendar.
Calendar for today, Wednesday, January thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Page one of the printed calendar, first category of business, House Bills on Third Reading, Uncontested Calendar, three dozen plus—
Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, ninety-eight, noes zero.
Ayes, ninety-eight, noes zero. The bills pass.
Continuing with today's calendar, next category of business, page fourteen of the printed calendar, House Bills on Third Reading Regular. Mr. Speaker, there are half dozen or so bills in this category. Beginning on page fourteen, first bill is House Bill two thousand four hundred and four relating to transient occupancy tax, certain counties.
Shall the bill pass? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, sixty-two, noes thirty-one.
Ayes, sixty-two, noes thirty-one. The bill fails to pass.
Turning to page fifteen, printed calendar, House Bill eighteen eighteen relating to parking ordinances enforcement.
Shall the bill pass? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, eighty-seven, noes eighteen. Sorry, eighty-seven, noes twelve, I apologize.
Twelve, the bill passes.
House Bill eighteen nineteen, excuse me, it is a bill relating to child support enforcement fees.
Shall the bill pass? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, ninety-seven, noes two.
Ayes, ninety-seven, noes two. The bill passes.
House Bill twenty-two eighty relating to child day programs exemption from licensure.
Shall the bill pass? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, ninety-nine, noes zero.
Ayes, ninety-nine, noes zero. The bill passes.
Turning to page sixteen, continuing, House Bills on Third Reading Regular. Next up, House Bill two thousand three hundred and one relating to alcoholic beverage control, limited mixed beverage license for retail cigar shops.
Shall the bill pass? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, ninety-three, noes five.
Ayes, ninety-three, noes five. The bill passes.
House Bill two thousand six hundred and thirty-four relating to alcoholic beverage control, local referendums.
Shall the bill pass? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, sixty-seven, noes thirty, extensions one.
Ayes, sixty-seven, noes thirty, extensions one. The bill passes.
House Bill two thousand three hundred and sixty-seven relating to alcoholic beverage control, delivery permittees.
Shall the bill pass? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, ninety-eight, noes zero.
Ayes, ninety-eight, noes zero. The bill passes.
And, Mr. Speaker, turning to page nine, the printed calendar had been removed from the block, page nine, House Bill two thousand three hundred and twenty-eight relating to the Virginia Public Procurement Act prescribed subcontracting by certain small businesses.
Shall the bill pass? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, ninety-eight, noes zero.
Ayes, ninety-eight, noes zero. The bill passes.
Mr. Speaker.
I'm sorry, you're right. Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Knight.
I rise for a motion.
Delegate has the floor.
Having voted on the prevailing side, which we passed, the House Bills on Third Reading Uncontested, I'd like to reconsider that vote.
Delegate Knight moves that having voted on the prevailing side, the House reconsider the vote by which it passed the uncontested block on Third Reading. All those in favor of that motion will signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. Shall the bills pass? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, ninety-nine, noes zero.
Ayes, ninety-nine, noes zero. The bills pass.
Continuing with today's calendar, next up, page seventeen of the printed version, next category, House Bills on Second Reading Uncontested Calendar. House Bill Second Reading Uncontested, approximately four dozen bills in this category. On page seventeen, House Bills twenty-four, twenty-five, that one's been removed from the block because it's been re-referred to HWI. House Bill sixteen thirty-six has been removed from the block and has been moved to the regular calendar. Therefore, turning to page eighteen of the printed calendar, first bill in the Second Reading Uncontested Counter Block, it's House Bill sixteen sixty-four, a bill to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to out-of-state drug offenses, restricted driver's license. Bill is brought to the committee on Transportation on January seventeenth and subsequent by the Committee for Courts of Justice with an amendment nature substitute.
Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The committee substitutes agree to. Delegate Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members of the House, House Bill sixteen sixty-four provides that a Virginia resident convicted of a drug offense out of state may petition the general district court in which they live for a restricted license, which is coming into conformity with what we already allow for Virginia residents who are convicted in-state. Hope it will be the will of the body to pass the bill and move it on to its third reading.
House Bill seventeen eleven is a bill to amend and reenact two sections of the Code of Virginia relating to reorganization of motor vehicle registration, licensing, and certificates of title statutes, segregation of criminal offenses and traffic offenses, alteration of judicial authority to dismiss related criminal offenses. Bill is brought to the committee of Courts of Justice.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker and members of the body, this bill comes to us from the Committee on District Courts as a recommendation. It amends two statutes relating to the registration, licensing, and titling of motor vehicles. It moves the criminal offenses currently contained in section forty-six point two, six thirteen of the Code to forty-six point two, six twelve of the Code, so that forty-six point two, six thirteen would only include traffic infractions, while six twelve would then only include criminal offenses. Because six thirteen currently contains both traffic infractions and criminal offenses, the information provided in the summons is often insufficient for the court to determine whether a defendant has been cited for a traffic infraction or charged with a misdemeanor. If it does not identify whether the case is a traffic infraction or misdemeanor, the clerk's office is unable to determine the necessary case processing, such as whether the defendant should be advised of their rights. So therefore, this bill will make things a little clearer, Mr. Speaker. I move the bill being grossed and passed on to the third reading.
Continuing with the block on page nineteen, House Bill seventeen nineteen is a measure to amend and reenact two sections of the Code of Virginia relating to Campaign Finance Disclosure Act of two thousand and six, applicability to certain candidates for town offices. Bill is brought to the committee on privileges and elections.
Delegate from Montgomery, Delegate Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill seventeen nineteen seeks to keep Virginia's preeminent status as the number-one state in the country for campaign finance disclosure. This would allow for anyone who is running for a town office in a town of a population with less than twenty-five thousand people who raises or spends more than twenty-five thousand dollars—
Waynesboro relating to city council procedures, real estate tax assessments. Bill is brought to the committee on county, cities, and towns.
Delegate from Stanton, Delegate Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, House Bill eighteen ninety-three is a charter bill for the city of Waynesboro that authorizes any person aggrieved by a real estate assessment made by the assessor of real estate to have the right to a hearing before the city assessor and to apply for an appeal before the Board of Equalization. The bill allows the city council to choose a date and time for its July organizational meeting following an election, and the bill also authorizes an ordinance wherein the city is the recipient of money, funds, or grant to be passed upon one consideration of the city council instead of two, as is required for other ordinances or resolutions having the effect of ordinances. I move to gross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Clerk will continue.
Continuing with the block, House Bill nineteen thirteen, it is a bill to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to subdivision ordinance sidewalks. Bill is brought to the committee for county, cities, and towns with an amendment.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Bolivar.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move the committee amendment.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Committee amendments agreed to. Delegate Bolivar.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill nineteen thirteen is an extension of a bill that we passed in two thousand and six. It was dubbed the Sidewalk to Nowhere Bill. The purpose was pretty simple. If you have one undeveloped lot and it's surrounded by two lots that have sidewalks, it allows the locality to be able to link that up, and that helps to make our community safer and more walkable. What that bill didn't address are larger gaps along our existing roads, and these are particularly common in some of our older subdivisions and developments. And as that stretch of road starts to redevelopment, all this bill does is allow the locality to start linking up that sidewalk network where the comprehensive plan actually calls for sidewalks. Move that we engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Continuing with the block, House Bill nineteen forty-four, it is a bill to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to civil actions, termination of indigency. The bill is brought to the committee of Courts of Justice with amendment nature substitute.
Delegate from Smith, Delegate Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Committee substitutes agreed to. Delegate Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill nineteen forty-four is an equal access to justice measure. The bill simply provides that indigent persons, as defined by the receipt of state or federal public assistance, would be exempt from paying filing costs or fees associated with uncontested divorces. Hope it would be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Next up in the block is House Bill nineteen— Next up in the block is House Bill 1945 on page 45, excuse me, on page 24. It is a bill to amend and reenact two sections of the Code of Virginia relating to no-fault divorce waiver of service. Bill is brought to committee for Courts of Justice with an amendment nature of substitute.
Delegate from Smith, Delegate Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I'd move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. Need at least one or two. All those opposed, no, committee substitutes agree to, Delegate Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. House Bill 1945 simply provides for a more streamlined and cost-effective filing requirement for uncontested divorces. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Continuing with the block, House Bill 1988, it is a measure to amend and reenact sections of the Code relating to military retirement benefits, marital share. Bill is brought to committee for Courts of Justice.
Delegate from Charlottesville, Delegate DeScana.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. More divorce bills, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members of the House, HB 1988 is a bill that arises in the aftermath of a congressional action that was taken in 2016 that changed the Uniform Services and Former Spouses Protection Act. With that change, it interjected a little confusion into Virginia law and how courts interpret military retirements. The language of this bill fixes that confusion so these issues can be addressed smoothly in the process of obtaining a divorce. I move that the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Next up in the block is House Bill 2,046, a measure to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to elections, form of ballot, ballot order. Bill is brought to committee on privileges and elections.
Delegate from Roldo, Delegate McNamara.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the House. House Bill 2,046 simply requires that all elected offices are presented on the ballot prior to any constitutional questions. I move to engross House Bill 2,046 and move to third reading.
House Bill 2,052, it is a measure to amend and reenact portions of the Acts of Assembly of 1948, which provided a charter for the city of Richmond relating to runoff elections. Bill is brought to committee on county, cities, and towns with an amendment nature of substitute.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, committee substitutes agree to, Delegate McQuinn.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, members of the House, House Bill 2,052 is a city of Richmond charter bill that conforms to its provision for deadlines for voter registration absentee ballots for runoff election to the same provision found in the State Code of Virginia. The Cameron Richard Charter has no provision for voter registration deadline for absentee ballots when there is a runoff election for the office of the mayor. And number two, the voter registration deadline for absentee ballots when there is a runoff election for the office of the mayor after a special election. I ask that the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading. Thank you.
House Bill 2,059 is a measure to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to non-payment of child support, amount of arraignment paid, time period to pay arraignment, repayment schedule, suspension of driver's license. Bill is brought to committee for Courts of Justice with amendments.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, move the amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, committee amendments are agreed to, Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. House Bill 2,059 makes changes to the grounds for suspension of an individual's driver's license. The bill includes that an individual who is delinquent in child support payments and has failed to comply with a subpoena, summons, or warrant may request a judicial hearing within 30 days instead of 10 days. I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Turning to page 26 of today's printed calendar, continuing with the block, House Bill second reading uncontested. Next up is House Bill 2,119, it is a measure to amend and reenact two sections of the Code of Virginia relating to school attendance officers. Motion for a rule to show cause, child in need of supervision. Bill is brought to committee for Courts of Justice with amendments.
Delegate from Prince William, Delegate Carol Foy.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, I move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, the committee amendments are agreed to, Delegate Carol Foy.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. House Bill 2,119 is an effort to address truancy. The bill authorizes a school attendance officer, division superintendent, or his designee acting as an attendance officer to complete, sign, and file with the intake officer a motion for a rule to show cause regarding the violation or enforcement of a school attendance order. The goal of this bill is to streamline the truancy enforcement process. I hope it is the will of the body to engross this bill and move it to its third reading.
Continuing with the block, bottom of page 26, House Bill 2,127, it is a bill to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to best interests of a child, maximizing time minor children spend with each parent. Bill is brought to committee for Courts of Justice with amendment nature of substitute.
Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, committee substitutes agree to, Delegate Davis.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, House Bill 2,127 deals with when determining the best interest of a child related to custody and visitation, that the court shall assure frequent continuing contact with each parent. And I hope it's the pleasure of this body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Continuing with the block on page 27 of the printed calendar, next up, House Bill 2,133, it is a measure to amend and reenact sections of the Code, repeal one another, all relating to the Virginia Department of Emergency Management Annual Reporting Requirements, Virginia Comprehensive Emergency Management Report. Bill is brought to committee on militia, police, and public safety with amendments.
Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, the committee amendments are agreed to, Delegate Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the House. House Bill 2,133 seeks to streamline and increase the efficiency of the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. In the reports, it combines 12 reports into one and puts the reporting date at November 1st to the legislative and administrative branches. Hope it is the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 2,141 is a measure to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to local service districts, broadband and telecommunications services. Bill is brought to committee on county, cities, and towns with an amendment nature of a substitute.
Delegate from Stafford, Delegate Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, the committee substitutes agree to, Delegate Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. House Bill 2,141 adds to the enumerated powers of service districts the ability to contract with a broadband provider to facilitate delivery of last-mile broadband services to unserved areas of the Commonwealth. As we continue to look for ways to expand broadband, this bill will give our partners at the local level a mechanism for funding the extension of broadband throughout their localities. Move that we engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Continuing with the block on page 28 of the printed calendar, next up is House Bill 2,178, it is a measure to amend the Code of Virginia relating to false caller identification information penalty. The bill is brought to committee for Courts of Justice with amendment nature of substitute.
Delegate from Suffolk, Delegate Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, the committee substitutes agree to, Delegate Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. House Bill 2,170 stems from the problem we all too well is spamming. In this piece of legislation, we make it a class-three misdemeanor for any person to cause a telephone to ring that results in the display of false caller identification. Ask me, engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
House Bill 2,224 is a measure to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to local Board of Zoning Appeals, Town of Glade Spring membership. Bill is brought to committee on county, cities, and towns with amendments.
Delegate from Washington, Delegate O'Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, the committee amendments are agreed to, Delegate O'Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This is a charter change for the Town of Glade Spring. They've had difficulty in a town their size of finding five members for the Board of Zoning Appeals. This would allow them to have three to continue to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals. So I move that we engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Next up in the block, House Bill 2,225, a measure to amend the Code of Virginia relating to immunity of financial institutions and their employees for liability, disclosure of potential financial exploitation of adults. Bill is brought to committee for Courts of Justice with a substitute.
Delegate from Washington, Delegate O'Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, the committee substitutes agree to, Delegate O'Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. House Bill 2,225 provides an additional layer in the code section related to immunity for disclosure of financial exploitation and simply allows the financial institution to be able to provide supporting information and records to law enforcement once that information has been reported. I move that we engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Next up in the block is House Bill 2,229, it is a measure to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to affordable housing, waiver of certain fees. Bill is brought to committee on county, cities, and towns.
Delegate from Enrico, Delegate Bagby.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Virginia Code currently allows a locality to enact ordinances providing for the fee waiver of building permit fees and other local fees associated with construction, renovation, or rehabilitation of housing by 501(c)(3) with a primary purpose of assisting with the provision of affordable housing. HB 2,229 would expand this authority by allowing local governments to enact similar fee waiver ordinances to private sector housing providers that are pursuing affordable housing. I hope it's the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Next up in the block, House Bill 2,263, it is a measure to amend and reenact two sections of the Code of Virginia relating to Firefighters and Emergency Medical Technicians Procedural Guarantee Act, Breach of Procedures. Bill is brought to committee for Courts of Justice with an amendment nature of substitute.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Kresek.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I move adoption of the substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, committee substitutes agree to, Delegate Kresek.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This bill revises the Firefighters and Emergency Medical Technicians Procedural Guarantee Act so that evidence solely gathered in an interrogation that violates this current code section cannot be used against a firefighter as a cause for dismissal. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Turning to page 30 of the printed calendar, next up in the block, second reading uncontested calendar, House Bill 2,273, it is a bill to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to passing stop school bus handheld device. Bill is brought to committee for Courts of Justice with an amendment nature of a substitute.
Delegate from Falkir, Delegate Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, the committee substitutes agree to, Delegate Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. What the bill does with the committee substitute is it adds an extra $250 fine if one passes a school bus with a stop arm out and is texting while doing so. I move the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Next up, House Bill 2,278, Chairman Cole, that is a bill to amend and reenact two sections of the Code of Virginia relating to expungement of police and court records, absolute pardon. The bill is brought to committee for Courts of Justice.
Doug from Spotsylvania, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House. House Bill 2,278 is a very narrow bill, addresses a narrow provision in the Code where someone who is issued a pardon because of absolute innocence, absolute pardon because they were actually innocent, can get their record expunged. Current law is that they have to petition the court to have that expungement done. What this bill would do would make the expungement automatic. I think it's unfair to somebody who has been wrongfully convicted to require.
Say aye. All opposed, no, the committee substitutes agree to, Delegate Bell.
Mr. Speaker, members of the body, this bill would allow a school board, which was working with the school bus camera program, to use a private vendor for its work. It also includes provisions for security and for punishment if the release of the information. Hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to a third reading.
Continuing with the block on page 32 of the printed calendar, next up, House Bill 2,420, it is a bill to grandfather certain non-conforming use. Bill is brought to committee on county, cities, and towns.
Delegate from Stanton, Delegate Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, House Bill 2,420 provides that a wall built on residential property shall be grandfathered as a valid non-conforming use, and the wall should not be subject to removal solely due to such nonconformity. I move to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Continuing with the block, House Bill 2,485, it is a measure to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to industrial development authorities, legislative intent. Bill is brought to committee on county, cities, and towns.
Delegate from Middlesex, Delegate Hodges.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. House Bill 2,485 authorizes an industrial development authority to facilitate and support landowner access to carpet markets through aggregation of landowners to reach a size that attracts the investment of private capital. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
House Bill 2,542 is a measure to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to delegation of parental or legal custodial powers, child placing agency. The bill is brought to committee for Courts of Justice with an amendment nature of substitute.
Delegate from Bedford, Delegate Byrne.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, the committee substitutes agree to, Delegate Byrne.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The committee substitute is an agreement now between the bar, the family law, and the other groups that had a few concerns with the bill as it stated last year. This is a program that we have been doing as a pilot program in our budget called Safe Families for Children. It's a wonderful program that's designed to give families hope in crisis, and it's a community-based program. What the bill does is allow a parent or legal custodian of a minor to delegate to another person by a properly executed power of attorney any powers regarding care, custody, or property of the minor for a period not exceeding 180 days. And by doing this, it keeps the families intact and in their own particular neighborhoods. So I would be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third
Continuing with the block, page 33 of the printed calendar, next up, House Bill 2,622, it is a measure to amend and reenact multiple sections of the Code of Virginia relating to removal of a child, names and contact information of relatives or other interested individuals, including grandparents and extended family members. Bill is brought to committee for Courts of Justice with an amendment nature of substitute.
Delegate from Bodatide, Delegate Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, the committee substitutes agree to, Delegate Austin.
Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 2,622 requires any proceedings in which a child is removed from their home, the court shall order the parents or guardians of such child to provide the names, contact information for all relatives and other interested individuals, including grandparents and extended family members to social services. Under current law, definition of other interested individuals only includes specific reference to grandparents. I would ask that the bill be engrossed and moved to its third reading.
House Bill 2,625 is a bill to amend and reenact multiple sections of the Code of Virginia relating to recounts, rules of procedure, multiple simultaneous recounts. Bill is brought to committee on privileges and elections.
Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, HB 2,625 addresses recounts and specifically rules of procedure for multiple simultaneous recounts. The bill requires recount courts to issue a written order setting out the rules of procedure fixed by it for the conduct of recount prior to the commencement of such recounts. The bill also directs that the State Board of Elections promulgate standards and instructions for conducting simultaneous recounts of two or more elections in a single election district. I move the engrossment and passage to the third reading.
Next up in the block, House Bill 2,679, it is a measure to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to the jurisdiction of Juvenile Domestic Relations District Courts, findings of fact, status as a special immigrant. Bill is brought to committee for Courts of Justice.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Salmon.
Mr. Speaker, members of the House, House Bill 2,679 grants the Juvenile Domestic Relations District Courts jurisdiction over petitions to make specific findings of fact necessary for a juvenile to petition the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Service and the Department of Homeland Security for status as a special immigrant as defined by 8 U.S.C. 1101a 27J. I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Turning to page 34 and continuing, House Bill second reading uncontested calendar block.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Rise for a request.
Delegate has the floor.
Could that last bill be moved to the regular calendar after engrossment?
After engrossment, that was 2,679. Clerk will proceed.
Continuing on page 34 and the block, next up is House Bill 2,740, it is a bill to amend and reenact. It is a bill to amend and reenact various portions of the Acts of Assembly of 1942, which provided a charter for the town of Kenbridge in Lunenburg County relating to town council, elections, chief of police, and powers of the town. Bill is reported for committee on county, cities, and towns.
The delegate from Lunenburg, Delegate Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and ladies and gentlemen of the House. House Bill 2,740, as the clerk just mentioned, amends the charter of the town of Kenbridge as it relates to the town council, the elections, chief of police, and powers of the town. As far as the town council, it increases that term from two to four years and just clarifies that the chief of police is the chief law enforcement officer of the town. My motion that this bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Next up in the block, House Bill 2,746. Bill to amend and reenact, Bill to amend the Code of Virginia relating to the central criminal records exchange, background checks through live scan device. Bill is reported for committee on militia police and public safety with an amendment in nature of a substitute.
Delegate from Bodatide, Delegate Head.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. I'll suppose no. The committee substitutes agree to. Delegate Head.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 2,746 simply allows businesses that are already authorized to run criminal background checks through the Virginia State Police to be able to run the nationwide fingerprint checks by utilizing a live scan device as an alternative to actual hard copy fingerprints being submitted on cards. Hope it will be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Next up, House Bill 2,769. It is a measure to repeal a section of the Code of Virginia relating to clerks of court, Torrance system. The bill is reported for committee for Courts of Justice.
Delegate from Rockbridge, Delegate Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This bill repeals the final section of the Virginia Code relative to the Torrance system. The Circuit Court clerks brought this bill to me. As I come to understand it, the Torrance system was established in 1916 for the purpose of establishing courts of land registration, which has never been used in Virginia. As all other code sections relating to the Torrance system have been repealed in this area, and this is the last one, I hope it would be the pleasure of the House to engross this bill and pass it on to a third reading.
Next up, House Bill 2,773. It is a measure to amend and reenact a section of the Code of Virginia relating to the Criminal Injuries Compensation Fund Amount of Award. The bill is reported for committee for Courts of Justice with an amendment.
Delegate from Albemarle, Delegate Bell.
Mr. Speaker, I would move the committee amendment.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. I'll suppose no. Committee amendments agreed to. Delegate Bell.
Mr. Speaker, this bill would raise the compensation available from the Crime Injury Compensation Fund for certain crime victims. Hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to a third reading.
And, Mr. Speaker, on page 35 rounding out the block, House Bills on second reading uncontested calendar, House Bill 2,796. It is a measure to amend and reenact a section of the Code of Virginia relating to the transfer by operation of law, transfer of death, for committee for Courts of Justice with an amendment in nature of substitute.
Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Yancy.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. I'll suppose no. The committee substitutes agree to. Delegate Yancy.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, members of the House, House Bill 2,796 provides clarifying language for states on assets in regards to the execution of a statement of transfer of death. Mr. Speaker, I move the House engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Mr. Speaker, not on this bill, but on the, on House Bill 2,170 on page 28 of the calendar, could I request that bill go to the regular calendar after engrossment?
I'm sorry, could you give me that number again? Is that 2,773?
2,170 on page 28 of the calendar. We've had a request that that go to the regular calendar after engrossment.
Okay, that bill will go to the regular calendar after engrossment. Shall the bills be engrossed and passed to third reading? All those in favor say aye. I'll suppose no. The bills are engrossed and passed to third reading.
Continuing with today's calendar, next category of business is House Bills on second reading regular calendar. A half dozen plus bills or so in this category, beginning on page 36 of the printed calendar. House Bill 1635 has been taken by for the day. Similarly, House Bill 1884 has been taken by for the day. Therefore, the first bill in this category on page 37 is House Bill 1929. It is a bill to amend and reenact multiple sections of the Code of Virginia relating to campaign finance, disclosure of all contributors. Bill is reported from the committee on privileges and elections with an amendment in nature of a substitute. And, Mr. Speaker, there are floor amendments drawn to the committee substitute offered by Delegate Simon.
Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Yancy.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Newport News, Delegate, I'm sorry, Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Mr. Speaker, point of order?
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I've looked at the original bill, which was a very extensive bill. It covered a number of sections and had to do with transparency throughout campaign committees, PACs, out-of-state committees, and so forth, and was all about transparency and changed a lot of things. The substitute that's before us is actually a very narrow bill, only has to do with out-of-state contributors, only has to do with campaign committees. And so, Mr. Speaker, I was looking at the handout we got from the clerk about germaneness, and it appears to me that this bill wouldn't be, the substitute wouldn't be germane to the original bill as it overly narrows the scope and changes the purpose, overall purpose of the bill. And so I would state that the substitute is not germane to the original bill.
I'm going to rule that it is germane. Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Yancy.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if this bill could just go by temporarily, just so that we can, oh wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker, but, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Need to do the substitute.
Fair enough. We can just do the, I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker, I was looking at the wrong notes. Yes, so going forward, Mr. Speaker, all this bill seeks to achieve, moving the substitute, Mr. Speaker.
Shall the substitute, committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. I'll suppose no.
No.
Substitutes agreed to. Delegate Yancy.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, members of the House, all this bill seeks to achieve is provide transparency in regards to novations and make them available to the public. Mr. Speaker, I move the House engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Okay, clerk will report a floor amendment.
All right, floor amendments offered to the adopted committee substitute offered by Delegate Simon. There are five, Mr. Speaker, on line, of the first one, line 36 of the committee substitute, after the word receipts, insert, again on line 36, "For each contributor that is a corporation, evidence that the donation made reflects the will of a majority of the shareholders of such corporation shall also be reported. Such evidence shall be provided to the campaign committee by any such contributor." Second Amendment, line 119 of the committee substitute, line 119, after, after the word of, strike 10,000, the figure, and insert the figure 1,000. Amendment number three, line 131, the committee substitute, line 131, after the word committee, strike the number 2,500, and insert the number 100. Amendment number four, on line 138 of the committee substitute, after the word contributed, strike the figure 5,000 and insert 2,500. And the last portion of the floor amendments offered, Delegate Simon, number five, on line 152 of the committee substitute, after the word committee, strike 2,500, and insert the figure 100.
Delegate from Carolina, Delegate Orat.
Mr. Speaker, I would ask to sever the amendments.
Okay, delegate has to sever the amendments. The delegate.
Speaker, then, point of order on the severed amendments?
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, when I look at the underlying original bill and then the substitute, neither of them embodied language creating a distinction or speaking to a distinction of corporate donors, which does not exist in current law.
Corporate PACs, inaugural committees, all those sorts of entities are held to the same standard of transparency, and we find out who all these donors are, and we don't have a problem, a situation where we have folks that can hide behind an out-of-state corporation and donate up to $49,900 and not have to file any kind of report or let anybody know what's going on with their campaign if it's where that money's coming from. So trying to get some dark money out of politics, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Yancy.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I would just simply respond by saying.
Speaking of the floor amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would just simply say that the bill speaks for itself, it's about transparency, and I think based on the way the bill is, it provides clarity, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for a motion.
Delegate has the floor.
I move that we pass by floor amendments two through five in a block.
Delegate Gilbert moves we pass by amendments two through five in a block. All those in favor of that motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll suppose no.
No.
The chair is in doubt. Ayes and nays are called for. The motion, shall amendments two through five be passed by? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 52 knows 47.
Ayes, 52 knows 47. Amendments two through five are passed by. Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Yancy.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move the House engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll suppose no.
No.
The bill is engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Continuing with today's calendar, page 37, middle of the page, next up is House Bill 1,981. It is a bill to amend and reenact a section of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Correctional Enterprises, a procedure for exemptions to the mandatory purchase provisions. Bill is reported for committee on militia police, public safety.
Delegate from Hanover, Delegate Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 1981 is a bill designed to reduce bureaucracy in our state agencies. The bill is an administration bill that seeks to make a change to the Virginia Correctional Enterprises program. Currently, state agencies are permitted to purchase goods and services outside of the VCE program, but they first must obtain a waiver in order to do so. House Bill 1981 removes the dual approval process for obtaining a waiver and only requires the CEO of the Virginia Correctional Enterprise program to review and approve the waiver request. The bill also contains notice provisions when a waiver request is denied. Mr. Speaker, I move the House engross the bill and advance it to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed to third reading? All those in favor say aye. I'll suppose no. The bill is engrossed and passed to third reading.
House Bill 2,034, on the bottom of page 37, has been taken by for the day. Therefore, turn to page 38, continuing with the category, House Bills on second reading regular. Next up is House Bill 2,142. It is a measure to amend and reenact two sections of the Code relating to school protection officers, minimum training standards exemption. Bill is reported for committee on militia police, public safety with an amendment in nature of substitute.
Delegate from Stafford, Delegate Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll suppose no. The committee substitutes agree to. Delegate Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Speaker's Select Committee on School Safety met throughout the year, and among its many findings, ensuring that our students and teachers have a safe and secure environment to teach and learn is of utmost importance. This bill is an effort to fill critical positions with well-trained and certified personnel to ensure that our schools are the safe environments that our citizens demand. Currently, localities have two options to fill these positions. In 2004, legislation was created, creating the school safety officer. These are school board employees and receive about one week's training. Option two is a fully certified law enforcement officer, also known as a SRO, and these are employees of the law enforcement agency itself. Many rural localities, and actually my locality in Stafford County, are having trouble recruiting people for these positions, mainly due to the 18-week training requirement that it is involved in being a fully certified law enforcement officer. Many localities would prefer to have these personnel remain as employees of their law enforcement agencies so well, so school safety officers are not an option. This bill, House Bill 2,142, does two things. One, it defines a school protection officer as an employee of the law enforcement agency. And two, the bill also directs DCJS to establish the compulsory minimum training standards for all persons employed as school protection officers. Also, it specifies that the training may be provided by the employing law enforcement agency, shall be graduated, and based on the type of duties to be performed. I hope it is the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Gentlemen, rise for a question.
With the delegate here for a question.
I will.
Delegate Yields.
I just wanted to ask, I don't have a strong feeling on this bill, but is this bill before us because of the VRS question? And, and don't we have officers who are retired, who paid into the VRS system, and now we can't really hire them because of that issue? Is that why we have this bill before us?
I would say to the delegate that that's not why the bill is here, but if this bill were to pass, I believe next year would make that problem we have a lot easier because you could specifically use this new category of officer and then treat those VRS separately than the regular officers.
Mr. Chairman, for the question.
Delegate Yields for another question.
I will.
Delegate Yields.
So could you indulge me in just one more time? Tell me why we need this bill?
So currently, like I said, safety officers in school, the SSOs, are school board employees. Many local law enforcement agencies prefer that they remain part of the law enforcement agency itself. One of the reasons for that, if you think back to Ferguson, when all that was happening nationwide, the law enforcement agencies receive periodic training, and in that case, they had a lot of training on racial bias. So as a member of the law enforcement agency, they receive all the additional training, whereas they wouldn't necessarily receive that as a school board employee. But currently, in order to get people certified as an SRO, they have to go through the full 18-week training academy. And they learn things such as motor vehicle code, how to run radar, crash investigation, animal complaints. There's certainly a lot of items in the 18-week course that are not required to provide security in a school environment. And when those people are at those 18-week courses, it also, they're being paid the whole time they're there. So if you have a locality that's already struggling to make ends meet, it's very time and cost prohibitive to send them to those eight-week courses. And I think that's why this bill enjoys pretty strong support from the Sheriff's Association.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. One last question.
Delegate Yields for another question.
I will.
So the schools have school security officers that enforce the rules of the school, and they are unarmed security people. I know them in my school system, in my schools, in my district. And then, in our, at least in my county, in our middle schools and high schools, we have SROs who are sworn police officers, they carry a gun, they do not, supposedly, they do not implement or enforce school rules. Your bill, is it a, the types of officers we're going to have now, is it a hybrid between the two? Are these going to be armed officers, they're going to be trained? Are they going to be trained so they can be armed? Are these going to be just school security officers like the schools hire? Now, you mentioned that they would rather not have a school security officer, and could you just tell us more about what that meant?
So, you should note that under the current code, a school safety officer could be armed if the school board decided to do that. In order to be armed, all they would have to do is submit a certificate saying they were trained by an agency. So, as a member of the local enforcement, they would receive obviously periodic training as well. So if the concern is that we have yet another person in a school with a gun that might be untrained, this proposal is proposing that this position would get much more training than the current option that they have as a school safety officer.
I thank the speaker. And a gentleman.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the gentleman yield for a question?
Would Delegate yield for a question?
I will.
Delegate yields.
Mr. Speaker, I would ask the gentleman whether or not these school protection officers would also be subject to any MOU that a school division would have with a local law enforcement agency for the provision of safety and security responsibilities in a school division.
I would say to the delegate that this bill doesn't specifically address that. It would be my hope that the current agreements that the schools have would address this, but the bill purposely is very vague in that it gives DCJS, who are the experts in this area, the broad authority to define what this would be and what training that they would receive.
Would Delegate yield for a follow-up question?
Would Delegate yield for another question?
I will.
Delegate yields.
Mr. Speaker, I would ask the gentleman, again, if they would be covered under the MOUs that are currently in place. So right now, we have, as you know, Mr. Speaker, we have MOUs between the law enforcement agencies and schools about the SROs in and around the buildings, in and around the students, and the services that they're supposed to provide. And I would just, again, ask the gentleman, hopefully a little bit more clearly, whether or not, if this bill passes and becomes law, a school protection officer would be subject to the same responsibilities that the SROs are currently required to provide per the MOUs.
I would say to the delegate again that this, there's no language in here that speaks specifically to MOUs, but if there is a law enforcement agency in a school that have an agreement in place, and the law enforcement agency is proposing to add this new category of personnel, that it would be in their best interest to define that upfront and adjust the agreements as necessary.
One final question, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate yield for another question.
I will.
Mr. Speaker, I would ask the gentleman if he's had any conversations with the DCJS and whether or not they're supportive, agnostic, opposed to this measure.
I would say to the delegate that DCJS came and said they opposed the bill, because they weren't sure what the training standards would look like or what the position would look like, and I gently reminded them that we're leaving the authority to DCJS to actually define that.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed to third reading? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. The bill is engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Continuing with House Bill Second Reading Regular Calendar, next up is House Bill 2,465. It is a bill to amend and reenact a section of the Code of Virginia relating to photo monitoring systems requirements for localities. Bill is reported for committee on counties, cities, and towns.
Delegate from Frederick, Delegate Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, HB 26, 2465 is not what you think it is. It does not create new red light cameras. This is strictly a transparency bill where localities are contracting with private companies, and we need the data of the cars that are going through the intersection so we can do proper planning. There are no photographs being, being made. No one will know that you ran the red light last week on your way home. None of that information is going to be available online. It'll simply be the data of cars that are going in and out of the intersections. I would ask that it be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and?
Mr. Speaker.
I'm sorry. Delegate from Albemarle, Delegate Bill.
Would the gentleman yield for a question?
Would the delegate yield for a question?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I will yield.
Delegate yields.
So, I would ask the gentleman, there are, I remember when this bill was passed, it was some time ago, and a lot of work went into this, and were there, there are various provisions for protection of the photos themselves, how they would be used, open to the public, not sold for sale, solicitation, be disclosed to any entity, using court outside the photo read context. I would ask the gentleman, are any of those being changed by what is done here?
Mr. Speaker, I would answer that no, that the, this is brought to me by the insurance industry, and as well as from the industries that design roadways, that this is not for personal information to be released, nor photographic information to be released. It's simply the data that, that, these are privately, these are being, this is information being held by private companies, and that to have that information be disseminated so that, so that they can calculate traffic patterns and such, it would be necessary.
Speaker, would the gentleman yield for, thank you, two more questions, but I'll do it one by one.
Delegate yield for another question.
Yes, sir.
Delegate yields.
Just going through in my head, and I'm trying to get up to speed here. The gentleman also, I would ask the gentleman, there were limits on how, how the cameras would be selected by the locality and the number. Could the gentleman tell us if those are also maintained in this bill, or does any of that changed?
Mr. Speaker, I would answer the gentleman's question by saying no. Once again, this was, this was in no effect an attempt to interfere with what we have done in the past. Once again, this is statistical data that they're trying to reach. If, if he believes that, that there is doing, being harm being done to it, I'd be more unhappy to discuss that further.
Ms. Chair, one last question.
Would Delegate yield for a question?
Tell the gentleman, I'm not, I didn't.
Would Delegate yield for a question?
Apologize.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Delegate yields.
Trying to pull the bill up.
And just last, the penalties, if any of this information is released, remain, that's not been changed?
Correct. Ms. Speaker, that is the correct statement.
Ms. Speaker, thank you.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed to third reading? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. The bill is engrossed and passed to third reading.
Next up, House Bill 2,548. It is a bill to amend and reenact two sections of the Code of Virginia relating to restoration of firearm rights. Report to state police. Bill is reported for the militia committee for, committee on militia police and public safety with amendments.
Delegate from Montgomery, Delegate Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. The committee amendments agreed to, Delegate Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, members of the House, House Bill 2,548 provides a mechanisms for, for mechanism for when a person's Second Amendment rights are restored, they are sent to the state police so that our road state, road troopers, road deputies, and police officers have that information in hand when they're talking to folks. So, hope it's the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed to third reading? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. The bill is engrossed and passed to third reading.
Continuing with the second reading regular, House Bill 2,585 has been taken by for the day. Therefore, returning to page 17 of the printed calendar, page 17, House Bill 1636, Delegate Knights has been moved to the regular calendar. It is a measure to amend and reenact a section of the Code of Virginia relating to trespass unmanned aircraft system, military airfield, or military helicopter landing zone penalty. The bill is reported for committee for courts of justice with amendment in nature of substitute.
Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Knight.
Mr. Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Committee substitutes agreed to, Delegate Knight.
Mr. Speaker, House Bill 1636, what it is, it's around military installations. This bill was brought to me by Oceana Master Jet Base located in Virginia Beach, and they've had problems with drones near there, and we can envision a jet fighter pilot coming in for a land and or making a circle in the flight pattern or something and hitting a drone, and what that would do to us in a brack situation. So, there's a federal law that says you can't do this, but only the federal authorities can enforce this law. So, what my legislation does, is it mirrors the federal legislation, and it allows the state and local authorities to enforce state laws which are the same as the federal laws. So I'm conforming, you know, my bill to what the federal law is. Mr. Speaker, I'll move the House engrossed the bill and pass to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed to third reading? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. The bill is engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Continuing on the calendar, page 39, final category of live action today, resolutions regular calendar. Resolutions regular, there are six of these from the Senate. On page 39, beginning with Senate Joint Resolution 292, confirming appointments by the governor of certain persons communicated to the General Assembly May 17, 2018. The bill was reported, excuse me, the resolutions reported to the committee on privileges and elections.
Delegate from Spotsylvania, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senate Joint Resolution 292 simply confirms appointments made by the governor, and I move its adoption.
Shall the resolution be adopted? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 94, no's 0.
Ayes, 94, no's 0. The resolution is adopted.
Next up, Senate Joint Resolution 293, confirming appointments by the governor of certain persons communicated to the General Assembly June 1, 2018, and on June 13, 2018. Resolutions reported for committee on privileges and elections.
Delegate from Spotsylvania, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker. Senate Joint Resolution 293 confirms appointments made by the governor, and I move its adoption.
Shall the resolution be agreed to? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 98, no's 0.
Ayes, 98, no's 0. The resolution is adopted.
Turning to page 40, calendar, next up, Senate Joint Resolution 294, confirming appointments by the governor of certain persons communicated to the General Assembly August 1, 2018. Resolutions reported for the committee on privileges and elections with an amendment.
Delegate from Spotsylvania, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker. I move the committee amendment, which removes a person from the appointment resolution who resigned from the CTB due to a conflict of interest.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. That committee amendment is agreed to. The amendment is adopted. Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker. I move adoption of the amended resolution.
Shall the resolution be adopted? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 98, no's 0.
Ayes, 98, no's 0. The resolution is adopted.
Senate Joint Resolution 295, confirming appointments by the governor of certain persons communicated to the General Assembly October 1, 2018. Resolution committed, reported for committee on privileges and elections.
Delegate from Spotsylvania, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker. Senate Joint Resolution 295 confirms appointments by the governor, and I move its adoption.
Shall the resolution be adopted? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 97, no's 0.
Ayes, 97, no's 0. The resolution is adopted.
And finally, Ms. Speaker, Senate Joint Resolution 296, confirming appointments by the governor of certain persons communicated to the General Assembly December 1, 2018. Resolution reported for the committee on privileges and elections.
Delegate from Spotsylvania, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker. This is the final resolution today anyways, confirming appointments by the governor. I move its adoption.
Shall the resolutions be adopted? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 97, no's 0.
Ayes, 97, no's 0. The resolution is adopted.
Mr. Speaker, that completes today's calendar.
Per House Rule 51, the House is returned to the morning hour. Does the clerk have any additional announcements or communications? The delegate, I'm sorry, the delegate from Bartlett, Delegate Head.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Rise for an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Joining us on the floor, I wanted to recognize, well, I think you may have actually just stepped out, going to recognize the chairman of the Renau County Board of Supervisors, Phil North, and if he can hear, and is still here, we'd like to give him a warm house welcome. Thank you.
Delegate from Suffolk, Delegate Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, just when I thought today's agenda could not get more horrendous, I want to read a quote directly from our governor. It was said this morning, "If a mother is in labor, the infant would be delivered. The infant would be kept comfortable. The infant..."